Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Chisholm City Council Meeting, January 11th, 2023, to order. Susan, would you please take a roll call?
Councilor Halverson.
Present.
Councilor Michaela Raha.
Present.
Councilor Allen.
Here.
Councilor Baki.
Here.
Councilor Halla.
Present.
Mayor Lance.
Here. Okay, so we need to adopt the agenda. I apologize, there are a few changes to add. A lot of things came in here at the last minute, but all good, positive things. Under Stephanie, D2, we're going to need to add EMT recommendations to hire. D3 would be appoint Tiffany Larson as ambulance director, emergency manager. Four, resolution number 0123-15, Minnesota Industries Disclosure. Number five, corporate authorization resolution and entity authorization for First National Bank. If there's no questions, I would look for a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, April.
One second.
Thank you, Jed. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any public participation? No? Okay, we'll jump into council reports. Councilor Halverson, would you please start us off?
Good evening. The only thing I have to report on is I attended the ambulance director interviews and a rec board meeting.
Thank you. Councilor Fulton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank everyone that participates and volunteers on all the boards and commissions. Their time is very valuable to our city and to help make our strategic, to make, help make our city make strategic and important decisions. So if you're thinking about being on a board commission, please fill out application and submit it to Stephanie. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Baki?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, Happy New Year, everybody. Couple of things, I, we had the annual chamber of commerce meeting today. So some upcoming events that are coming from that. February 8th through the 25th is our polar bear days. So there will be bingo, the big $12,000 raffle is going to be held during that time period. And then Slide the City is February 25th. For that, March 11th is the Chili Open. And then there's, of course, other events throughout the year that we'll touch on as those get closer. But that is all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. Councilor Michaela Raha, good evening.
Good evening. No report?
Thank you. Councilor Halla?
I got a few things. I attended the St. Louis County Conservation Open House last month. They had good ideas for stormwater issues in our cities, ways of deter geese. And they have a bunch of tools that can help our city. So I got some contact information for them. So I've got business cards and everything else. I attended the Central Enrange Centenary Sewer District Meeting today. It went well. And then a couple of things, Wallace Campaign last November. Lots of, there's like three top things that people in the city are pretty much worried about. And alleys are the biggest thing. I know it takes money and a budget where else, and our budget's set for the year. But if we find extra money for alleys, we really got to get on it because we hit those bad spots first. And I got a fun fact, too. It's according to a new KFAM poll today across the state, our ice arena in Chisholm ranks 112 out of 148 over the ranks across the state.
So. Thank you very much, Councilor. For myself, I have no formal report. I would just like to say welcome, everybody. Thank you very much, everybody at home, staff, all of council. Looking forward to four years working with you. Learned a lot under Mayor Champa, and I appreciate everything, sir. But I'd really probably be part of this group. So thank you very much. Interim ambulance director, Peyton. Good evening. Okay. Fire chief is gone this evening. Police chief?
No report, sir.
City building official, zoning administrator? No report. Mr. Johnson?
No report.
Larry?
No report, Mayor.
No report. Parks and Rec, Bridgette? No report. Tell it's been a nice start to the year, huh? All right, library supervisor?
I don't have a report either.
Report, thank you. City attorney?
No report, Mayor.
City clerk treasurer, Aliensaw, is gone this evening. City administrator?
I do have a little bit of a report. Just to piggyback on what Councilor Fulton said. We do have the birds and commissions listed online of the open seats. The application is also located there. If you have any problems, just contact Susan here at the City Hall. She'd be able to direct you. We also have some printed off sheets here if you're interested, just so where you can locate that. Tomorrow, I'll be presenting to the CDBG Board for funding for the Public Safety Building. So as everybody knows, that's out to bid. We do have pre-bid meeting tomorrow here, so that's all moving forward. Still looking for additional funding for that project.
Thank you very much. Our boards and commissions. This is a chance for everybody in the community to come forward and, you know, make the change that you want to see. Moving on, consent agenda. It consists of our list of bills, communications, which is November 16th, 2020, Public Utilities Meeting Minutes. December 8th, 2022, Police Commission Meeting Minutes. Minnesota Museum of Mining Appreciation of Support Letter. Minutes of previous city council meetings, December 20th, 2022, and January 3rd, 2023, reorganizational meeting. Payroll and overtime. I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like, is it possible to add something to the January 3rd, or do I have to wait for that January 3rd meeting? When we took out, the three of us took our oaths to that meeting? That Administrator Scraba administered to us? Is it possible to add that?
Oath of office?
Oath of office. Or am I missing that?
The party gentleman included them before the meeting started, but I can go back to them.
Well, I'm not sure.
It was before the meeting, so should that be added into our minutes?
It could be what we could do. There could be, there could be an intervening motion to amend that, that portion of it. And then if there's support for that amendment, then we could vote on the amendment. That would, that would be the request to add to the minutes. And then you would finalize the motion to approve the consent agenda, which would approve everything. So then it would be approved as amended.
You want those in the minutes? Councilor Fulton?
Yeah, I think, I think we should have them. That's very important.
So what's the motion?
So you have to motion to amend?
Make a motion to amend?
The minutes?
To add.
For January 3rd, adding in?
Adding. The oath of office.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll make a motion to approve, right?
The consent agenda.
The consent agenda.
Second.
Travis, thank you, April. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No unfinished business. New business. Chief Manor, gambling application, update information.
Good evening. Also, I think Travis kind of already spoke about this. Just before we put it in front of you is information only that gambling commission has proven the gambling permits for the chamber for that February 8th bingo and the 15th for their annual. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I do have questions. Sometimes we approve these, but then sometimes we don't.
So in the past, we changed that just a while back. I was signing the gambling board to approve them so that it's done on a timely basis instead of waiting sometimes. So I'll bring them as information already from this point forward.
Okay.
So that was a little change in procedure.
All right, thanks for that.
No, no, it's a good question.
Bridgette, Parks Trails Rec Director. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. I'm asking permission tonight to have you approve the job description for Chisholm Summer Rec Program Coordinators. And allow me to post and hire for those two, the two positions. And updated from what is in your packet is a new job description that has a couple more updates. Going to April, we came up with a couple more ideas on how to write it out. And that includes adding the days and times and updating the physical demands and work environment. I changed the language to be compliant and then also added an equal opportunity statement at the bottom. You'll see that there. So looking for a motion to approve that.
Looking forward to summer already.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve the Chisholm Summer Rec Program Coordinator job descriptions and posting for hiring, too.
Thank you, April. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Just like to say briefly, too, when we're running through this, it's very, it helps Susan know if I repeat who makes the motion and the second. So if I use your first name, please don't take any offense.
Yeah.
Moving on, Councilor Halverson. Request for Proposals, Engineering, and Surveying.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In light of what's happened in the past, especially in regards to the Third Street Northwest Project. My recommendation is that we would move away from SCH and go to a different consulting engineer for our street utility projects. And I've thought about it, and I think one simple option is we've used JPJ engineering interchangeably with SCH. And that might be a simple, easy way, just say we're going to go with them exclusively moving forward until the time changes. The other option would be to prepare an actual RFP document and send it out to a bunch of different companies. And that would include JPJ in that. There's another local company here in the range that would be qualified, and there's companies in Duluth. So I'm not really trying to suggest either way. I think either way would be good. And I just wanted to feel what the council felt. And then make a decision to either, I would say, just go JPJ, or should we do an RFP and interview firms and get their qualifications and their rates and all that? So that's my recommendation. And I think we should make a motion after we've had a discussion on what the council feels.
Okay.
I mean, would you, Stephanie, feel a lot of truth as well?
So I believe when it comes down to our engineering, we get to pick that anyways. It's professional, professional. So I think it wouldn't be a bad thing for us to have a list of different qualified engineering firms. Kind of difficult without having a project scope of work for someone to kind of give us.
Right, yeah, this is, we don't really have a thing, anything lined up right now, but, you know, there's going to be small things that come up this year. Where you need just, maybe you need a surveyor for a couple of minutes, or you need somebody to set property corners or something. Or a cost estimate. Or when we actually do get a project that we're going to go with, then have them, you know, do the plans and the specs and the documents and, and then do the, you know, construction inspection. And, you know, there's a myriad of different ways to do it, you know, hourly rates or percentage of construction. There's a lot of different ways to do it depending on the size and complexity or lump sum, you know, it all depends. And without anything really firm right now, except the Fifth Street South, we really want to do that. But JPJ's already basically completed that design. But if we do a alley project this year, that we pay some more rallies, you know, it's a simple, small project. And we're going to need plans and specs for that, or the splash pad, we need plans and specs for that. You know, there's a lot of small, little projects that we're going to need engineered plans for this year. And so, you know, as far as this year goes, I think it's going to be a lot of smaller projects. But eventually, at some point, a bigger project's going to come along again. It might not be till next year or whenever, but it'd be nice to have somebody lined up that we can go to whenever we need something small or when we get a bigger project coming. So, yeah, I know there's probably at least four or five in Duluth we could go to. There's a couple here on the range, JPJ being one of them. So I think we just make a, make a decision and kind of decide which way to go. And I'd be morally happy to help write the RFP and maybe get a committee if we're going to go that route. With Jim, Larry, and maybe myself and somebody else if we want to go the route of an RFP where we interview and just try to make a, a selection out of a pool of six companies or seven or whatever we can come up with. It's a lot more work.
Right.
Otherwise, we could just say, or just use JPJ. Just keep it simple.
I have two questions that come with that. So is there any issues or concerns with us directing, you know, our engineer to, you know, this is who we would like to use for a period of time?
And just for a, kind of a, for clarification for me, are, are we looking to engage a firm? Or is the discussion that we're looking to have now perhaps about the city setting a policy about how a firm would be selected to handle each individual project?
I think just selecting a firm to move forward with projects for, whatever projects come up this year. And it sounds like they're going to be mostly small ones, but we do, do need those services. And, you know, eventually a bigger project will come. And I think selecting a firm is nice because they have consistency from project to project and they get familiar with our tone if they aren't already.
And then my next question would be how does the council feel about how do you come up with that? You know, the one firm, you know, for all of us?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think that it's only fair to the taxpayers that we do an RFP and get estimates from everybody to prefer to pick one firm.
It's a professional services contract, so usually Jim just has the, you know, you rotate, correct? You know, so, yeah, I mean, when Marty approached me on this, you know, it's no secret to everybody up here that I wasn't a fan of how the Third Street project ended up. So I would agree that I would, I would like to go the RFP route and open it up to additional engineering firms. Not saying we can't land on the two that we rotate with currently, but at least let's open it up and see what, see what else is out there. That would be my thoughts.
I agree.
Okay, so we'd be looking for, I'm sorry, Councilor Raha, please?
Is this something we would do now or something we would do when we have a project?
I think we would develop the RFP as soon as possible and start sending it out to firms and see how they respond and who responds. And have them submit their different qualifications, their rate sheet, interview them and talk to them. I would say probably a committee would be a good thing. I would suggest Larry and Jim and myself and any, any others who want to be on it. That's, I think, up to us to decide who, and then we can work on an RFP once we're happy with it, send it out and review the responses. And like we do with ambulance director or any other job, you know, get the pool of people and rank them and rate them and interview them, talk to them and kind of whittle it down and see who we think would be the best fit.
So at this point, without having an actual project, shouldn't our goal right now just set the process of what we'll be doing the next time we have a project?
Well, a lot of times these really small projects are just done with hourly rates because it's, well, you know, if it's, it's been 15 hours on it and that's it, well. Sometimes it could be a lump sum, and that's what you talked to me about. It's like, well, how would you approach a small project? How would you approach a medium sized project, big project? What's your fee structure? How would you do it? But if you have the rate sheet, then you know. And that might be a factor is like, you know, if somebody's rates are 30% higher than the next one, it's like, well, then maybe you want to go that way. If somebody's got better rates for hourly projects, then maybe that's a, that's a deciding factor. You know, in the old days, bigger projects used to, the fees were a percentage of construction, 7%, 8% of whatever the low bid was, whatever the awarded contract was. Engineer typically got about 7% or 8% for the fee. And then the construction side would usually be hourly, but it usually also was another 8%, 9%, 10%, depending on the project.
Good.
The fee structures can be done in many different ways. And we'll see how, how people respond. Some firms may say, ah, we're just not interested. Sorry. And other ones say, yeah, we're very interested and see what their attitudes are and, you know, if they want to get involved with our city projects.
Jim, opinion?
Um, what I'm hearing, it sounds like all the council would like proceed is to put together requests for proposals. And we actually did that a couple of years ago when we did both the Lakeview Projects and the.
I'm sorry, I'm going to, I don't want to hear about it if I don't ask you to come up to the podium.
We've actually utilized that process in the past when we did the Lakeview Edition project. Did we send out an RFP and selected a firm? And about that same time, we did the Eighth Streets Northwest project and went through the request for proposal on a qualification based selection process. And selected our consultant via committee, just as you're suggesting. What I'm hearing now is that it sounds like you'd like to put together a pool of consultants. And then between staff and the council, we can decide, you know, which of those selected firms or that pool would be most appropriate for whatever project we have. If it's a small survey job, well, you're going to spend more transportation just coming out from Duluth than what a local can do it. But those are judgments, what's in the best economic interest of the city. When we get to projects, basically those, those companies have to send us a proposal for their design fees or the construction management fees. And those are all approved by council. So you've kind of got the final say on it anyway. So if that's how you wish us to proceed, we will certainly do so. Right now, Stephanie and I are busy trying to get some funding for our Fifth Streets Southeast public facilities. So it's going to be a couple of months before I get to that. But I don't, as you know, we're pretty much under contract with everything that we've got going in now. If we do some type of a melan overlay project, that would be probably the first opportunity, you know, to be considering that pool. If that's how you wish to proceed.
How about this? If small projects come up in the interim, you know, we've got JPJ onboard. If we need a plan for the splash pad or some small project or we need a PE to stamp it. I think Larry had one, wasn't there something with that east side of the lake, that little veterans thing or something? You needed, they needed an engineer to stamp a plan for that. I mean, it's small stuff, but you still have to have it. So maybe in the interim, we can stick with JPJ and then we'll go with the RFPs and develop a pool. And maybe we'll come up with the names of two or three more that we'd be happy with. And maybe as bigger projects come up, talk to them all and get a request or a proposal from each one of them and then decide that this is the best deal for this project. So, but we have a kind of a shortlist of pre-approved consultants available. That would, you said we have a pool, then we have choices. And then because some company is very busy at the time we want to do a project, it may not be so great. If there's another one that has plenty of time on their hands and we are already happy with them, then go with them.
Thank you.
If that's how you wish to direct, so.
Do we need a motion on that or?
I don't think so. We can direct our staff and our wishes of.
Yeah, if it's, if it's more of an informal process about just requesting information, you know, if we're, if, if what the process is, it'd be to call up a, a number of firms and say, could you send us a rate sheet? Then I, then I think it can be informal, we can just direct the staff. If it's going to be more formal, if there's going to be interviews or a process where we're making a formal communication, then we'd probably want to commit, take a formal action.
Be fine right now, waiting until we have a.
We could, we could find out how much interest there is. And then if we do a formal request and have a list of firms saying, we've on four that really are interested. And then maybe, maybe make a motion at that time for.
We're going to have to prepare the RFP now as part of the motion as we get time.
I have one question. If we have projects that are already kind of working with an engineering firm, instead of only allowing to use JPJ in the interim, I mean, can we continue working with the firms that we?
Probably absolutely continue with what you have. I mean, there's no, it doesn't make any sense to change on a project that's not completely.
Just to make sure because we know we're working with some.
I kind of figured that question come up, but like Third Street, I think we want to definitely have SCH onboard to complete that. Yeah, whoever's, if there's already an engaged firm and it's already underway, by all means, continue.
Okay. I think we can move forward with that direction. And then I think whenever we get a scope work for the next project, that'd probably be nice to have a nice pool of. Administrator Scrava?
Evening. Couple housekeeping things here. The first one is the RGGS landed minerals. We have a sign board located upon RGG land. And what's in your packet today is just renewing that for five more years and the cost of $250. I'm just looking for approval to move forward with keeping that sign on that, on that land. Absolutely, I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, April. For support?
One second.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. EMT recommendations for hire?
So ambulance has been busy. We had a couple of interviews for new EMTs coming onboard. We're recommending hiring Morgan Hansen and Brianna Hansen as EMTs with the Chisholm Ambulance Service.
Very exciting news, great to see. I'd look for a motion to approve those two hires?
Make a motion?
Thank you, Cheyenne.
Second.
Thank you, April. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Brian, quick question. So obviously, there's three of us up here on the ambulance. We, we can't hire the director, we have to abstain from that vote for the director.
That's correct, yes.
Are, do we have to abstain from both of employees?
The best practice would be to abstain from.
Best practice?
Yep, so you.
I would like to abstain from that last vote.
Brian, is three enough votes?
Yeah, so basically what happens is in a, well, in the, in the case of abstentions, the abstention votes go to the majority. So as long as we've got a quorum of the council, a majority of those left who aren't abstaining can make a vote.
Yeah. All right, so motion carries with Councilor Halla, Councilor Baki, and myself abstaining. Roll number three, that was for the, that was April. Should we re-vote on that? All right, I'd look for a motion.
Abstain.
Roll call. Susan, we can give us a roll call.
Councilor Halverson?
Aye.
Councilor Michaela Raha?
Aye.
Councilor Fulton?
Aye.
Councilor Baki?
Abstain.
Councilor Halla?
Abstain.
Mayor Lance?
Abstain. Motion carries.
So the next item I have on the agenda, also exciting news coming out of the ambulance. Thank you for all the participants of the ambulance director, emergency manager hiring committee. We had a really good pool of applicants and we are happy to report that we have a top pick coming to council tonight. So we would recommend Tiffany Larson as the ambulance director, emergency manager for the City Joan.
Okay, because of conflicts here, I'm going to hand my gavel off to Councilor Vice President Michaela Raha.
We are looking for a motion to approve resolution number zero, one, two, three, dash, one, four, to appoint Tiffany Larson as the ambulance director slash emergency manager. Member of the May Union and starting with annual salary of eighty-two thousand.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Uh, let's do a roll call vote for this one as well. Perfect.
Counselor Halverson.
Oh, I forgot to call for discussion, I'm sorry. Sorry, discussion?
Will we allow to discuss? No? Sorry.
Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Halverson.
Aye.
Counselor Michaela Rahah.
Aye.
Counselor Potten.
Aye.
Counselor Bati.
Abstain.
Counselor Calaba.
Abstain.
Counselor for Mayor Lance.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Yeah.
Will she give up the gavel?
She wants the gavel? Next. Now, while moving on, I'm going to pass my gavel to my council president.
Alright, council, uh, in front of you is resolution number zero, one, two, three, dash, fifteen. Reaffirming the relationship between the City of Chisholm and Minnesota Industries. As your resolution reads there, our mayor is a part owner and will not be directly contact or communicate city relative to goods and services supplied. So there is no change in the nature of the relationship. So, looking for a motion to, uh, approve resolution number zero, one, two, three, dash, fifteen.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Jed, second?
Support.
Thank you. Counselor Michaela Rahah, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Do I have to?
No.
And I'm abstaining.
Okay, I have one other item on the agenda. It's the corporate authorization resolution and entity authorization. What this does is puts Adam as a signer on our accounts and adds him to our beta accounts. So, looking for approval of that.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That was fun. So now that that's out of the way and moved on, there is no discussion. Congratulations, Stephanie Larson, it was not related to April Fulton.
Thank you. You know.
Welcome to Chisholm. It's a great staff, a great place to be, very fortunate to have you here and you're very fortunate to be here. Thank you very much. Okay, resolution zero, one, two, three, dash, eight, ratifying council boards and commissions appointments. Um, council, just a couple of changes that are on here, I'm not sure which one you have in front of you. Um, but there was prior an ambulance board, um, that was privately run and, uh, we felt that we should have council representation on there. Now it's kind of run by the city, so we didn't feel like there's reason to have a council rep coming on there. Um, basically it's just our training nights, so, um, unless there's any discussion regarding that, I'll move on with the other change.
There's one more change we should make, Mr. Mayor, if that's right.
Sure.
Uh, we do have Rams. Um, Counselor Vaki is the, uh, representative for Rams and results for.
It's a separate.
So that's separate, it's for you to inform Rams. I'm sorry. That's okay.
No, I thought it was out here too, so. Uh, so the other, another change was removing, um, the Redhead Motorbike Park Committee. Uh, Counselor Halverson and Counselor Cheyenne, Marty Halverson and Cheyenne Michaela Rahah, uh, there's two lines there, sorry. Um, being that that is now run through our Parks and Rec, we figure that should just be absorbed in the, uh, Park and Rec Board and, uh, council liaison for that. So without, uh, with those two changes, I think we can move on here. First one, we'll just tackle these one at a time, Economic Development Authority. So this board meets at eight-thirty, I should know that one, eight-thirty, the first Wednesday of every month. Um, I've been on that board for four years, Counselor Vaki's been on that board for four years. Uh, it's a very important board, I'm very happy to be on it and I will continue to serve on it if nobody else wants to be. Um, that's one of our biggest things as counselors is to keep striving to move forward with economic development. So I'm not sure if anybody else wants to jump on that board. If so, I would gladly step away so somebody else can have that experience. But if it doesn't fit anybody else's schedule, is anybody else that can make that work? Travis, how do you feel?
Um, so I very much enjoy being on that board, but in the same breath, um, you know, I am now at the school again. So eight-thirty sometimes is, is not easy for me to get to, depending on what my schedule looks like, so, um, yeah. I mean, I would certainly stay on it, but if, if other counselors want, want to be part of that, I am fully open with that as well.
So is there one or two counselors that would like to try to make that work with their schedule?
I can make work.
You can make a workup? Is there anybody else who would like to be on there?
I kind of want to, but that, what time is it?
Eight-thirty.
On what day?
First, first one is the other of the month. And there's one day-long meeting once a year. And that's usually T B T, Friday afternoon, it's Friday.
How long do those meetings usually last?
Yeah, anywhere about hour and a half, two hours, depending.
I don't know that I can realistically make that work once a month. Mr. Mayor, do we need two?
I think it's important that we have two. That's, that's a. So I, I can.
It's easier for you than me.
I'll stay on it for a year and then, yeah, so next year if your schedule changes, um, I would love to invite any counselor that wants to, you know, if there's more people that want to come into a meeting, um. You know, come and visit, as long as we don't have a quorum, you know, it's definitely good, something to, we'd love to do that. Some of it's confidential, so maybe that's a bad idea. Alright, so, uh, Jed and myself will, uh, go onto that board. Board of Appeals currently is, or was, Mayor Champa and Counselor Halverson. April's on there?
But I'm sort of.
You're certified?
You are now.
Alright.
I'd be willing to do it, I'd need to take the train before the end of the month.
Yes, before the first.
Yep, willing to do it.
Okay, Counselor Halverson. And anyone else trained? I did actually go, complete the training, um, so I'd be the alternate if so wished, otherwise it is only an hour-long training, um. Full of great information, if anybody else.
I am doing it myself, but you can be the alternate for your bike if I'm planning.
Chairable Gambling, I'm sorry, this is another one that was going to be re, being removed, correct? Because it is you, Chief Manner and, oh?
Commission.
That's the commission.
Please commission president.
Please commission president. Administrator Scrava and then.
I'm on the chair of, I'm on the gambling currently.
Are you?
Yep.
Wouldn't that get moved to the three? Who's the other, the chair of the gambling?
In the current, in this, in the current charter, it's a member of the charitable gambling associations, which we do not currently have one from the town. So technically it's, in, in the ordinance, it's the, that person, the chairman of the please commission and the administrator. It doesn't spell out that, uh, council rep on that board in, in the ordinance. Council rep.
Well, if we should have a council rep, Travis, would you like to stay on there?
Yeah.
This one surprised me, Hosing and Redevelopment Authority. I did not think that there would be one, let alone two individuals who would be interested in, um, being on this board.
Mr. Mayor, I am extremely interested in being on this board.
Excellent. That's good to know. And, um, that, something with this council that I believe, uh, just like with the E D A, I think the H R A deserves two council members on here. Um, that's not something that we can just do, um, so I did ask Counselor Michaela Rahah to engage that board to look at their bylaws and, uh, possibly amend. So I will, uh, step aside and, uh, let Cheyenne jump on there. I just asked that, um, you see what we can do to get another person on there. And I think, uh, I was actually looking at statutes, they can have up to seven, so I'm not sure when they went down to five. But, um, no, hopefully that's something I can come back in the future. Library Board is currently Counselor Fulton.
She wants to stay.
You'd love to stay?
I would love to stay.
Is there anyone that wants to fight her for that? Challenge her? No? Okay. Planning and zoning, counselor, uh, I, myself, I've been on that one for, uh, four years. Um, again, I think it's a, it's an important board to be on. I would step aside if somebody else wanted to go on there. They meet the first Monday at four of every month. Um, I, I do enjoy it, so I would gladly stay on there, but, uh, if somebody else would like the opportunity, I would step aside.
What time?
Four P M. Here, nobody else?
If you're happy to keep going, be going.
Okay.
I could do it if, if you want to step away.
Well, I can keep going. I'd love to have you come down there and, uh. Please commission. Cheyenne, I think you want to stay on there?
I would love to.
You'd love to?
Unless somebody else really wants it.
Anyone have a issue? Thank you, Cheyenne. Public Utilities Commission, um, Counselor Halla, you've been on the P U C board for seven years, six years?
Six, yeah.
Would you like to stay on there? I think it's very important, uh, I'd hate to take away your, uh, history and expertise. Rec Board, I believe that is currently Marty and I believe Marty would love to stay on that board.
I'd love to stay on that board, yep.
Anybody else have a problem with that? Fire Department, I am currently on that board. It is easy for me to make those meetings. The business meeting is six-thirty, the first Wednesday of every month. Other than that, we have trainings throughout that, uh, not really invited to, but, um, if anybody else would like to, uh, sit on that, otherwise I would. As long as there's not an issue? I'll stay on that board. Camp Ground Committee is currently Counselor Halverson and Counselor Michaela Rahah.
No, it's me, it's April.
It's April? Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the highlighted one. I'm sorry. You would love to stay on there.
I would also like to stay on that one. You're not on that one. I thought I was. No, it's Marty. Oh, I was on the redhead one. Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense.
So the camp, Camp Ground Committee is currently Counselor Fulton, uh, Cheyenne obviously has interest in there. Marty, you have interest on there also?
I'd, I'd be willing to stay on.
He's got some good ideas, he's been working with Larry too. April, did you want to stay on it?
Yeah.
Alright. That's my jam.
Okay. Other council reps to other committees and organizations beyond the Yellow Ribbon is currently Mayor Champa. So, um, if nobody else wants to jump on there, I will, uh, I will. Chamber of Commerce is currently Counselor Vaki.
Yeah, I would like to stay on that one.
Youth Center, Cheyenne.
Fine, I'll stay on that.
Yeah, that's fine, good. Community Ed is currently Counselor Fulton, April, what do you think?
I'll stay there, absolutely.
Iron Range Youth in Action. So that is another one that was Mayor Champa, I'm not sure when they meet or what they do. I will learn, I guess. Nobody has any issues with the Iron Range Youth in Action, I'll stay on there or jump on there. Museum of Mining. Counselor Michaela Rahah.
This is another one that I would really like to stay on.
Yeah? Anybody have any issues? Safety Committee. Counselor Fulton.
When, when, when do we, when do we meet?
Usually we meet the first, or the third Wednesday of each month.
I haven't.
And it's usually like two P M.
Yeah, it's two P M.
Well, I love safety. What do you think, Counselor Fulton?
I, I'm not able to make those.
Okay, anybody else?
When are they?
Two P M?
Probably make most of them, but he might be here or miss, but.
And when we have annual training, we don't hold them.
Thank you, Jed. Precious Paws, Counselor Michaela Rahah.
This is another I would like to stay on.
You would like to stay. Anyone have any issues? Alright, so everybody's happy, that's a good, that's a good, uh, resolution. So I would look for a motion to approve resolution zero, one, two, three, dash, eight with those appointments.
Motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Support.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Reappoint motion, resolutions, I was going to make the motion, resolution zero, one, two, three, dash, nine, reappoint city administrator, Stephanie Scrava.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Further discussion? I think this. I think it's a no-brainer, um, you know, the city, its staff, and the city and the staff only do as well as the leader and Stephanie, you are the leader here and in the city. Um, thank you very much for everything that you've taken on and, uh, that you've done for us and the community. Nobody knows. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution zero, one, two, three, dash, ten, reappoint building zoning safety official, Mandy Galley.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, Travis. Thank you, April. Discussion? Again, Mandy, thank you very much for all you do. Again, people don't know half of it, so, tends to be a thankless job in some of these areas. Thank you for everything you do. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Resolution zero, one, two, three, dash, one, one, reappoint Trenti Law Firm.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, April. Thank you, Jed. Brian, thank you.
If I didn't do this, I'd have to get a real job.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Resolution number zero, one, two, three, dash, one, two, reappoint Fire Chief Chris Masusi, who's working a double tonight.
Motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Chief Masusi's not here, uh, I would just like to thank him for everything he's done, again, uh, these positions and the leadership that, uh, he brings with it. Um, you know, we wouldn't be where we are without him, so thank you, Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Resolution number zero, one, two, three, dash, one, three, retirement benefit account deposit to O P E D. So, deposit to other post employee benefits account. So deposit to other post employee benefits account. Sure.
So, um, what this is, is we take and just transfer a hundred thousand dollars into our retirement benefit account just to make sure that we have the funds for those on an annual basis.
And we do that yearly, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, I'll make that motion.
Thank you April.
Support.
Thank you Travis, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Anybody have any miscellaneous comments, ideas, concerns, moans, groans, complaints?
I'd like to see, um, we've got a, we've got a volunteer in the, in the back here, his name's Stephanie Halla. And I, I was reading the minutes and I wanna, I wanna say thank you for, um, volunteering at, on the police commission and doing some ride-alongs and, and being a part of that and I, I really appreciate that. Thank you for all you do.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Counselor Fulton, and thank you for reminding me, um, shame on me for my report. Uh, in December, I missed John Orich, who had his six-year anniversary. In January here, Jeremy Arger, ten years, Patrick Idy, fourteen years, Dan Lassente, ten years, and Justin Olson, seven years on our department. So I'd like to thank you guys very much for what you do for the fire department, the industry, the community you serve and all your friends and family, so thank you all very much.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Thank you Jed.
Support.
Thank you Cheyenne. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, everyone have a great night.